That real quick and we'll do that right after I get to, after the rule call. And then we'll trust it. Is that okay, sir?
Yeah.
Okay. Good morning, everybody. It's actually afternoon now. Today is October thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. It's a little after twelve. I'd like to welcome everybody to our regular business meeting. Sir, would you open us in prayer?
Sure. Heavenly Father, we just ask you, Lord, to be in the midst of this meeting today, Lord, and watch over everything that is said and done. Let it be done for your glorification and put it, put in your arm, I, what you have set out for this township. Lord, watch over our residents, our first responders, and Lord be with Scooter's family. Continue to comfort them and come comfort his brothers and at the fire department in Jesus' name. Amen.
I'd like to change a little bit here before I go to the pledge. If everyone just keep the whole family, the Mollins family, in your prayers for something like that to happen. So suddenly we lose someone at forty-seven years old and never, you know, someone went to sleep and didn't wake up. And the firefighters that work with them, that go to work every day, and now they have a huge hole in their heart. So just continue to be with them and their family. If we could do the pledge, Jan, would you lead us, please?
Congratulations.
You're the flag.
United States of America. And to the Republic of Louisiana. One nation, one liberty, and liberty is for all.
Thank you. And if I may have a rule call, ma'am, when ready?
Trustee Fleischer?
Yes.
Trustee Leiser?
Yes.
Trustee Blavens?
Yes.
So before we go into old business, we're gonna, we have the fiscal officer here and then the deputy fiscal officer. Has not attended the meeting. She's resided back to her office.
Okay.
Do we wish to carry on or I, you brought up a good point. I just want to make sure that we are in compliance.
We're not in compliance.
Okay.
Janet needs to be out here. She has given us a doctor's excuse that says that she is not able to fulfill her duties. She is on a doctor's note. I talked to Julie the other day. She sent out something to all of us. It's going to come up in Monday's meeting. We put, we all voted and went across the table. Everybody voted for it to put in.
Sure.
Janet as a fiscal officer. She said in the email, you cannot have two fiscal officers.
Okay.
So now she's here as a resident. That'd be great. And I don't even care if she sits at the table.
From the doctors.
So what do you want to do? You're the chair.
Okay, so it just, where, where we're at right now is we did have a letter from her doctor that was sent. And I said to everybody that she was on light duty. I sent that to Julie and the last that I heard back, Julie said, sorry. Getting caught up where she was gone. And I believe she just said, I, I don't have my emails in front of me. I don't recall anything that we can't have. I don't know. I'm confused.
So, so who's gonna get paid, sir? You can only pay one.
That's absolutely true.
So who are you gonna pay it? I'm assuming if she's here, she's gonna wanna get, start being paid.
We just gave her everything Janet has.
Here's what we'll do. Do you mind being a resident today until we figure out the legal of what we're to do? I mean, this is all new to everyone as far as coming in today. I don't, you know, you're doing your, what you're elected to do and et cetera, but are we doing something illegal? I don't know. Janet didn't have anything to bring up to.
She does.
She does.
So that's where the problem is, is if she has something to bring up and then you're here from what I understand. I'm not an attorney. I don't know what we're doing, but I'm being advised by the board that we are in compliant.
Right, and I am being advised by the AG's office and the auditor's office that with my light duty note that, you know, I needed to be here for this meeting.
So at this time, it is now twelve oh six. We are gonna be in recess for quite, just a moment.
So he second assess to come back on.
Yeah, there's still one camera there. Okay, the time is now approximately twelve sixteen and we are back in session from recess. If I can have a second on that.
I will second that motion.
With a second, I'd ask for a rule call.
Trustee Fleischer?
Yes.
Trustee Leiser?
Yes.
Trustee Blavens?
Yes.
Okay, so I spoke with our attorney and where we are at with this, and I can only go by the legal counsel that we have. So what we're gonna do is ask if you wanna join, you can. The reason why is because the letter that went to the attorney's office says, until the end of the year, the, you're incapacitated, or I don't know exact what the letter said. I don't have it. But she is saying that Janet should be the one to, to fulfill until the end of the year, until you have a doctor's that totally releases you to do your job. I don't.
Okay, I will get with the AG's office because that's the complete opposite of what they've already said. So we'll get this rectified by next meeting, for sure.
Then we can.
Yes.
Well, at this time, if you would like to stay, I would just ask that if you go to the audience, Janet has some stuff to be able to preside and then in the meeting. So if you wouldn't mind, you know, if you'd like to stay, by all means, it catches you up to speed. Or if you wish to go, you may, but at this time, we would just ask that you would either go to the audience or.
Okay, and because what I was told by the AG and the auditor's office is being on light duty was perfectly fine and that was releasing me back.
So what I would ask you to do is to get with your, get with the AG.
My servant.
Or the AG, ask the AG to get ahold of Julie and then, cause Julie advises us what to do.
Right.
So I am not an attorney. I don't know all these answers. The only thing I can do is go by our counsel of what they.
Right.
As chairman, here's the steps that you have to take. So I apologize. No personal vendetta or et cetera, but at this time, we would just have to ask you to take a seat out here.
I understand because the state of Ohio does still recognize me as the fiscal officer of Franklin Township.
Okay. So now we're going to move on to old business and under.
See how he's staring at me?
I'm sorry?
How Mike is leaning over you to stare at me in a very non-appropriate way.
Really? Okay, if we can, we're just gonna.
Show me an appropriate way then, young lady, would you? No, I'm sorry. You don't know anything about appropriate.
If we, if we can continue on, if we can, guys, if we can just keep this professional here. Here, um, the uns, uh, hearing for the unsafe structure fifteen eighty-nine and fifteen ninety-three Harrisburg Pike Resolution twenty twenty-five one seventy-five. Do you wanna, ma'am?
Is there anyone here for that?
There's someone here for it.
Yeah, there's someone here for it. Okay, sir, would you like to come up here? Go ahead and for the record, state your name.
George Smith.
Okay, Mr. Smith, I thank you for being here.
Yeah.
So I have in front of me somewhere here.
That's a different one.
One of these here.
You have it there?
Is that about the photos or the, the resolution?
The resolution for this unsafe structure. And what, and you've been addressed on this, correct, sir? And you received notification?
Not in a straightforward way.
Okay.
Kind of found out this through the county.
Okay.
They, they sent me a letter and I got everything cleaned up like they asked and Kim.
From, yeah.
From Frank County.
Yes.
He was supposed to come out today. I took pictures yesterday. I have them here. We've got everything boarded up except for one window on the main structure and one on the back, and they're just higher up. That's all. We cleaned it all up last week, removed all the debris, all the trash. There's two boxes. When I bought the property, they're still there. I'm gonna get those out tomorrow. So, but yeah, this is kind of the first I've heard of it. Todd, Captain, just gave me the two pieces of paper that I didn't know anything like this was going on until I kind of find out. I think it was through Kim. And so he said, you ought to just show up there tomorrow. And I said, okay, I will. So I brought pictures with me. I cleaned it up, boarded it up. I am wanting to do something with the property. At this time, I don't know what.
Okay.
But not to knowing that there's been any talk about, you know, tearing them down or whatnot, this is all new.
Okay.
For me.
So what we're gonna do is hear from Captain here and, and if you just kind of fill us in, sir?
Well, the properties down there that Mr. Smith owns.
Can, can we state the properties for the record, please?
Sure. Fifteen property is fifteen eighty-nine Harrisburg Pike and the other one is fifteen ninety-three Harrisburg Pike. Those two properties have been visited by myself and Mr. Bill Poole, our chief building official. And at the time of our visit, Mr. Poole suggested that we condemn the properties on the fact that he noticed roof sag. There was mortar joint missing from the brick. There were some other deficiencies that he had noticed as the chief building official. And he said, that was the appropriate action to take was to condemn the buildings or have them repaired. In fact, in the piece of paper I gave Mr. Smith earlier, it actually states that, that they either need to be torn down or repaired, one of the two. And it does give a thirty-day timeline for that. I'm sure if you have further questions for Mr. Poole, we can provide you with that number. She can contact him. But the buildings are in a state that they're not structurally sound at this point. The one building, the fifteen ninety-three building actually had a fire and nothing was repaired from that fire. I know you were, you were in the, the last time I spoke to you, you were in the midst of potentially selling the property.
Correct.
So this is one of those things that Mr. Poole, I don't believe he was aware at that time when we did the inspection, but I don't think that would have changed his mind at all. He views the buildings as being unsafe. I, I tend to agree with him, so.
Okay. So one of the problems that we have is that we have a engineer firm that is saying that the building structures are unsafe.
I understand that.
So at this point, what is your, I mean, just putting up plywood on that one end and sealing that, we're still in a bad situation.
I agree. And with, every time we did put up plywood, they, the easiest way of saying it.
Vagrants.
Vagrants. They would bust in the door, put them, go back in there and do that. That's two truck body boxes. Once we get them out of there, there won't be anything around there after tomorrow. But yet I just, again, I don't know out of today that I found out that they want to be torn down. I do agree with Captain about the ninety-three building. The other one is a brick building. It could probably be saved. But the other one is probably going to get tore down, whether I sell it or the new buyer, you know, does it.
So here's where we're at in this situation. This is something that's gonna need addressed right away, not when you sell it and a new buyer has to sell it.
And, and that's where, like I said, I kind of found out all this through Kim yesterday, a little bit of it. And so he said, take your pictures, show them that you've done what you've done.
Yeah.
And, and work something out that way. And I'm willing to work with you. I just, I don't think I can get it done in thirty days. That's all.
So here's where we're at. We have a situation where we have vagrants going in. We have, we're gonna put our fire department in danger. Vagrants this time of year is gonna build fires inside to keep warm.
Well, that's what started the fire.
Right, right.
Two years ago.
So we already have a pattern or as some people say, I forget the word, past practice.
Right.
So past practice tells us that we've already had a fire in one structure because of vagrants being in there. But what this is going to do for our fire department, we're putting lives at risk. So are we saying that we wait thirty days and potentially have more risk this time of year?
Well, I did put up the.
That is for the fire department. There are signs that I asked him to erect under being a abandoned building, a vacant building so that way firefighters know that.
They don't need to get in.
That would be hazardous to, to the welfare of the responding units. For the simple fact is that the building, and I think I explained to you at the time that the building needed to be repaired.
Yep.
Or it needed, it needed to be addressed. I don't, I didn't mention demolition at that time, that that was previous to Mr. Poole getting involved. But I, I did say the buildings are gonna have to be addressed as far as repairs to them, cause there was a, in the fifteen eighty-nine building, if I'm not mistaken, there's a cellar access that was on the outside that was covered by a piece of plywood that was not.
It, there's a big stone over it now, so nobody can get in.
At the time, there was not. Mr. Poole loaded that as well with the brush and the other things that were there at the time. I asked that to put it so that way fire department personnel knew not to enter the buildings because there was a danger of, of collapse.
Yeah.
To put it mildly.
Sure.
Put it simply, there's a danger of collapse not to go and make it a defensive fire from the exterior. He did hang those signs. But we sent certified mail to twenty-two oh nine.
I haven't lived there in five years.
Okay, that's, that's the legal address from the property owner of those two. So we did send it to twenty-two oh nine Harrisburg Pike, Grove City, Ohio, four three one two three on October fourth. It was received by an individual.
Who signed for it?
Uh, it does not say who was signed for it. This is the United States Postal Service tracking paperwork that we have.
I got you.
So somebody there took it and obviously they didn't, from what you're saying, didn't, didn't relay that information to you. And that, the piece of paper I handed you, that, that's what would have been in that information.
Yeah, the ones you gave me today.
The ones I gave you today.
So the biggest concern, Captain, what is your recommendation? Because what I'm sitting here hearing is we're basically bandaging it up, closing it up, and then we're waiting for a sale. Then we're gonna be into a new owner that we're gonna tell them they're condemned.
I didn't mean to interrupt you. Go ahead.
That potentially there could be another owner and then we're gonna be back here with the new owner going, you know, this needs to be done. Either it needs to be brought into compliance or torn down. So we're in a situation, it's like a ticking time bomb, especially this time of year. It's evident that people are wanting to get in. What is your recommendation?
Well, since Mr. Smith is saying that he's just becoming aware of it this last week, we need a definitive plan. What's happening? I'm not a real estate agent or a real estate attorney, but since he has now received those letters that's from our billing official saying that the buildings need to be repaired or torn down, if he goes to sell that, that must be disclosed to the new property, potential buyers.
Correct.
Um, so they'd be under the same orders and I, this is just my guess, but it'd be hard to sell a property with orders like that hanging over it unless they just want the land. But we need to have a definitive plan and a timeline. And I, and I know you said you can't have them down in thirty days. I can completely understand that. But we need to have, this is going to happen by this date, this date, this date, and it needs to happen fairly soon. If you're planning on tearing them down, submit for a demolition permit from, from Nicole here in the office. If you would like to meet with Mr. Poole and discuss what you would need to do to bring the buildings back up to code and where they're structurally sound. We could try to make that happen, but it needs to happen within the next week. I'd say by, by the next board meeting, we need to have a hard, fast plan.
That's how, are you going to repair it or when is it coming down? Okay. The boards are okay with that. Give me.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, well, give me a minute, cause I've spoke, they have not, so.
Mr. Chairman, we have granted extensions in the past. I would, I would make a motion that we, we, we give. I'm sorry, sir, I forget your name, but.
Jones.
Jones?
Smith.
No, Smith. Mr. Smith, until the next board meeting, which would be November thirteenth, which should be ample time to come up with a plan. He agrees. It should be an ample time.
Working with the, with the captain.
Yeah. That would be my motion that we give him until the thirteenth. The only thing I would add to that is I have seen your, I have also had pictures and you've done a wonderful job cleaning it up. We have a business that was out on Georgia's own road called Shakers and we've been down this process with them and we got burned. But I feel wholeheartedly and I agree with James, just the respect you have back and forth with the board. We didn't have that with Shakers. And you are definitely seen and there's proof that you want to work with us and stuff like that. So I would wholeheartedly. Would you like to second that motion? You're saying, so I was gonna just say, I happily second the motion.
So with a, I have a second on the motion. I accept the motion as, as spoken here today. We have a second on the motion and I'd ask for a rule call when ready.
Trustee Fleischer?
Yes.
Trustee Leiser?
Yes.
Trustee Blavens?
Yes. So you have a, I'm gonna call it a stay for now. And is, and the thing that I would highly recommend, as you heard, I didn't want to bring in another incidents with your incidents. But what I highly recommend that you do is stay in touch with the captain and I would go by your place and every chance you get, get with our chief if you think someone's in there before you board it up so you don't board someone in there.
Oh, yeah. Well, I signed in, what is it, the trespass agreement? Trespass agreement with Ratliff.
But I would make sure that you know that it's secure.
Right.
For, for the next couple of weeks until you're back here again. I will tell you, you get more flies with honey than you do vinegar.
Yeah.
The more that you're working with us, the more we can work with you.
Yep.
But we're concerned about the safety and well-being of our fire department as well as life. So we don't want to see someone injured over something. So best of luck to you on that, in your endeavors, whichever way you go.
I just want to add something for the record, Byron. Did we or did we not have a deceased person in one of those two buildings?
Yeah, I do believe we did.
Were you aware of that, sir?
Captain told me that, a couple, when I've met him, when he asked me about the signs to put them up.
And now? Go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
How long have you owned a building? Both of them?
I own the house next door, so I bought them as an investment. I think it was in two thousand eighteen or nineteen.
Okay.
But I have multiple properties and this one kind of felt.
Sat there. Gotcha. I understand that.
So, but I'm good for my word.
Okay.
I'll tell you that.
Well, you're here, so that, that shows a lot. Trust me.
Right.
Yeah, so I appreciate it. Do you have anything else for the board?
No.
Okay, well, thank you for coming.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, please, I'm gonna let you have my business card. Make sure you think you're. I'm gonna give you the one, just like, I'll get it done for you. So before the next board meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, sir, he needs to have either a demolition permit or a building permit submitted to us by the next board meeting, correct?
Correct. Right. With a plan.
On the timeline, so we can, we can get Mr. Poole fairly easily.
And you have a, a hotline to him? You have a number that you guys?
Where I.
Okay.
And everything.
Okay, that's. Okay. Know his blood type.
Pretty much.
Can we get an updated address for, for you?
Yeah, it's on that, it's on that sign there.
Okay, all right, great.
Okay, so next I want to go to, it's, jump the agenda around a little bit. We got Smith and Hall LLC. Sir, would you like to?
Yes.
Come up to the podium? So, Mr. Smith, you handed me this that we have to sign, annexing approximately fifteen point three acres out of Franklin Township into the city of Columbus. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So on behalf of the residents of Franklin Township, I am an elected official and I represent all the residents here in Franklin Township as well as my other two. My question to you is, why is this being annexed and why is it not being, staying in the township and being developed in the township?
My understanding is the, the city of Columbus maintains policy, which I, I'm, I think you're aware, is that for single-family residential development, you're allowed a one-inch water line in order to serve that property. If you're going to do anything more and need greater capacity in order to serve that property, the only way to get that greater capacity is to annex in the city of Columbus.
Is this, are, you're an attorney. Is that correct?
I am, correct. My name's Jack Reynolds.
Okay. So as an attorney, if this is just their policy, what is the actual law? Are you allowed to challenge someone that is, in my opinion, hijacking by saying, if you want a one-inch line, you're gonna have to annex?
It, that is their established policy.
I understand.
And I.
But what does legal, as you as an attorney, what does the law state? Because back.
Law states that they, they, they handle the water and sewer contract with the city, city of Columbus and Franklin Township. They have a contract and basically what, what the contract says is that they're, they're, they will provide a one-inch line for residential purposes.
I understand that.
And if, if there's anything greater that's required for development purposes, it has to be annexed into the city of Columbus in order to get that greater.
I believe that there was a, there is a, I don't know the year, but there is a new law that was put in effect within the last six years or so that stated if there is a water line or water capacity in that area, the capacity fee or the tap fee shall be paid, but yet you can, you can tap on. So the other thing that I'm gonna ask you, do you aware that you, if the people, Franklin Township, if we pass a levy called a township-wide levy, that you will be required to pay both taxes, city of Columbus?
Absolutely.
Okay, and you're fine with that?
Absolutely.
So do you realize that like every person in this room, do you realize when you pulled up, you saw the station out there, it said, station closed, correct? Do you realize how much of the, you've probably been up Heyg Avenue. Have you seen how much construction and, and everything is going on?
Yes, sir.
We have a station that's closed. Do you realize every time that this is taking place, we lose the tax base? And it's upon every person in this room that has to pay a little bit more because it's being annexed and we lose the tax base on that property?
It is a type two and therefore it pays the property taxes that are still paid through the annexation.
Correct.
Type two.
But the, the amount of the taxes that are paid, are they equal or greater than what they're currently being paid?
And again, I'm, I'm.
You're the attorney for this, right?
Well, what I'm saying is that the, the value of the property will, will go up with development.
Correct. Something that's worth one million is gonna be worth ten million.
That is correct.
When it's completed. And then my point is, we have, someone, give you an example, St. Margarita. There's approximately what, four or five houses that was annexed into the city of Columbus that, let's just say our taxes off of that was, gee, maybe ten thousand dollars down through there. Now that particular property, because it's all annexed as one and annexed into city, is approximately twenty million dollars with the apartment buildings that are going up. And that's probably being low, if I would have to guess. Would you assume that? So my question would be, what is the tax value now of properties at twenty million? Cause I'm looking at these faces. Can you imagine paying your taxes if your home was worth twenty million dollars? So what this does to Franklin Township is why I'm asking, I'm making you aware. I don't think that we have a leg to stand on. We have to, you know, assign this. We have to accept it. But this is probably one of the first times in eleven years that I had someone come before the board of trustees saying that they're gonna do this. So I commend you and your company for doing that. But what I wanted to do is not shame you. I don't want to embarrass anybody or challenge you or et cetera. But a lot of people watching, the seriousness of this township is not gonna be a township if we keep annexing it and asking the residents of Franklin Township to pick up the tab. It's no different than you and I go to dinner and I take a phone call and then I leave and the waitress comes over and says, well, you're gonna have to pay for your friend. We're having to pay for the friends that are leaving.
Let me just simply state that the, the reason that I am here is what I provided you all with today.
Sure.
And for you today is simply, and I'm sure you're aware, is when I file an annexation with the county commissioners.
Right.
Under Ohio Revise seven oh nine oh two, I am required to provide a copy of what's, what's filed with the county commissioners to the clerk of the township to, from which the annexation is being taken.
Right.
And so I came in yesterday and was told that there was nobody to sign for the receipt.
Gotcha.
Material and that I would have to come before you all.
Sure.
This, this afternoon to simply get a receipt for the signature.
I understand that.
So.
I do thank you for hearing us. You can hear the frustration that we go through all the time.
Yes.
As trying to be a local government. There's no difference. You've heard of Hollywood Casino?
Yes.
Same situation, the tax base that we were getting. So if you would amuse me for just a moment, I want to open the floor for a few questions cause I do see a few hands raising and I will take questions if we can make it quickly.
What's the location of this property?
The property is going to be.
There's a number of.
Seven, there's numerous of them. It's Cherokee sixteen ninety-five, seventeen twenty-five, seventeen thirty-five and seventeen fifty-three North Hague Avenue. So those are the properties and I don't have Mr. Stevens here. I believe, do you know those locations? Would that be on the north side or south side? Or excuse me, the east side or the west side?
West side.
So the west side.
West side is Hague.
Actually Cherokee, we have two homes there, so it's not those homes, it's the field.
Correct.
Okay.
It's all vacant property except for one property.
I understand that, okay, so we know where that's at. If there's no other questions, yes ma'am.
Who's the developer?
Kill them? Do we, is it on here?
No, Metropolitan Holdings.
And what are we intending to see go in at apartments?
The apartment complex.
Is this affordable housing apartments?
Uh, I, I can't speak to that.
We're just asking, we're not blaming, don't worry. Um, so I, yes ma'am.
Did you already get tax abatements? And then I have one more quick question.
I, I can't speak to that either, I.
Okay, the other, the other question is, um, I talked to a couple other developers that are stealing land there on Hague Avenue and they told me that they can tie in to Franklin County Water and Sewer and it is large enough because they were telling us that they were tying in to, back by the railroad tracks for the water and sewer, which is Columbus Water and Sewer back there. But they are actually tying in on Hague Avenue to Franklin County Water and Sewer.
Okay.
So using that excuse anymore is, is not factual.
Well, I, I'm only here because.
I understand, so I appreciate you lis, and I'm closing the, I'm gonna close the floor. I appreciate you hearing and hopefully you can take some of this in back. No one's wanting to attack you personally, but again, very rarely do we get to, we only get something going, it's like playing Monopoly, um, you know, go to jail or go back to start because we've already taken this. And it's very frustrating and even though I hear type two annexation, um, there's no reason that some of this is, could not be, it would've been nice if the company would've came to us and said, what can you do for us? We've had other companies come before us, Sheets, they stayed in, in front of the casino. We have the Western Wall that's getting ready to develop, so far they're willing to stay in the township. And the reason I ask you about the line size et cetera in the new law is for that very reason because what's getting ready to go into Western Wall is huge. So, you know, it's, it's time that Franklin Township not be ate up in the way that they're eaten up. Even though it's changing names and under the land, we're still gonna, gonna run in there, our resources are still gonna be used there. Type two, yeah, we get a little bit of dollars from that, but we're losing ground. If you look at the map over here and what used to be, it's so chopped up.
Yep.
So I will, I have to sign this, sir, do you know right here is where you're asking me to sign?
Uh, no, there's, there should be a receipt.
You show me what I need to sign and we'll get you out of here.
Here we go. That's it, all you need to do is, uh, date it and signature.
Okay.
Well, thanks for coming back, I was here yesterday, but I'm one of the newest trustees.
Okay.
And so this is very educational for me, I hate that it took us forty-five minutes to get to you. I'm sure you're a busy man and you've made two trips here for this.
Everything else is sure, all I need is the one that you signed.
See if this is legal for you.
Yeah, that's tenth, tenth of mine?
Thirty.
There you go.
Are you good with that, sir?
I'm good with that, there, this is your all's copy.
Okay, we've noticed that we are, we have the form that, uh, fifteen point three acres is now going into the city of Columbus, so thank you, sir. I hope, and again, please don't take our sentiments in the wrong way, it's just, it's like a death. We are losing something that we greatly want to see our township flourish.
Well, and, and I, I understand where you all are coming from, I do work, uh, all around central Ohio and it, it's always a pleasure to come down and talk to you all.
Well, thank you very much, sir, and you have a good day. Um, update on nuisance property resolution twenty five, uh, twenty twenty-five, uh, one seven four Hopkins?
Yeah, these are just some updates from the, the set of, um, the resolutions that we put through a few weeks ago for nuisance properties. Um, so eighteen eleven Hopkins, um, is still in progress, but the resident seems to be addressing. Um, they did call in, you know, so it's a, it's a resident that I believe lives by themselves and so she's asking for some assistance in, um, on cleaning up her property. Um, as far as the nineteen twenty-three Little Avenue that has been resolved and nineteen twenty Hopkins has been resolved as well.
Okay.
So those letters do help, they do seem to work, uh, but I felt that the board, um, and needed to know the updates on those resolutions.
So, so at this time, what I'd like to do is give a, a very thanks to trustee Blevins. Trustee Blevins, even when I've been out in the community, I've taken pictures and addresses and I apologize if I over, too much, but the board has worked very well and he's taken upon his shoulders with everything else that he's done. And with Robin, we are making a difference in some of the blighted homes and the trash and the cars. So, um, this is good news that we are actually getting some of this taken care of. I don't know why, uh, maybe it's a lot of the people, and this was my opinion, if you go where Florentine Restaurant used to be, they used to call them the bottoms and when you said the bottoms, you figure it's certain, I'm, I've been explained. Franklinton, thank you. A lot of people have moved up and a lot of times they bring what they have with them and their way of living. And no one has told them any difference until we start saying, um, you can't live in a camper in the backyard, you gotta, can't just put your trash on the porch, um, and those type of things. Um, but it is amazing, as I go through the township, you have these beautiful homes, um, I'm jealous of some of their grass because I like to keep mine as clean and I'm like, how do they do that? And then the house right next door, you have six cars or, this amazes me, a car stripped down to the frame, two tires and the frame cut in half and the engine sitting in the front yard. I don't know if it was art or what, but it caught my attention. And you have nice homes on each side, so I can imagine what the people next door think and stuff like that. So we are trying to make a difference and the biggest part is when we bring it to the attention of the homeowner or the land owner, if they're renting, obviously it's making a difference. So I commend both of you for the work that you've done on that, I appreciate.
No, I gotta go, James, he sends me addresses too.
Yep.
And I just wanted to know, uh, I'm sorry, I'm leaning back.
That's okay.
But I don't want to offend anybody, but I can't, this is, we have done this, me leaning back for a long time, I just wanted to clarify something.
Sure.
So we can talk, but James turns in addresses too, so it is not just me, we work together as a team and I can't agree more that we're having an impact.
Yeah, and, and, and it's great because there's a lot of new people, we're seeing a lot of different cultures come into our township and if they don't know and no one tells them, you know, it's like when we were younger, don't put your elbows on the table, mom used to always say, don't put your elbows on the table in different manners and then you go to a restaurant or something. So I, I can't, I think sometimes with the letters going out and, and I, I'm, I'm kinda stunned what you showed me with people actually saying, hey, clean this up without it being a threat. We have a gentleman here that you heard owned a building since twenty sixteen. We've had people die in it, it's unsafe and he's willing to work with the captain to get that taken care of. And alls it took was the attention of, um, our staff to say, hey, this is on safe structure. So us seeing something, saying something and doing something is making a difference and I encourage, if we have something, uh, I know a lot of times people will call me and say, I don't want to be known for calling this in, but can you take a look at this address and this address? And I've done that and I don't even ask them their name or phone number when I get phone calls. So I got a feeling, success breeds success, so I got a feeling that we will be getting notified with more stuff and that's fine. So enough on that, I will, um, move on. Frank County Sheriff is not here, do you know, sir, uh, chief, if he has anything?
No, he isn't contacted.
Southwestern Area Commission, Patty Spencer.
I have nothing.
And Patty, I have a question for you, can you come up?
To the hot seat.
Yeah, so I had a call and it's easier to talk to you this way. I had a call in regards, I'm gonna guess it was eight hundred, I, I was not where I could write something down and I took the call. Um, Frank wrote that there's some type of company that does paving or something. So you already know about this and they are getting, um, the residents are like, you know, we got the smell of the trucks that come in, it's a residential area and now they're asking to take it from residential to light industrial or industrial. Can you fill me in with this?
Do I have to?
I just don't know who else to ask.
They came before us in this late summer, if I remember right, um.
Is this city or is this township?
This is city.
Okay.
Um, it's at the corner, uh, it, the address abuts Frank Road. I wish you'd let me know sooner because I could've brought a whole bunch of.
Yeah, I just heard this yesterday, so I apologize, I should've probably called you and I figured, well, I'll see you, I'll ask you what you know.
The, the address abuts Frank Road.
Okay.
The back of the property that had been just grass and just.
Open land.
Open area, uh, it backs up to residence on Marsdale.
Okay.
Uh, which are Columbus residents.
Gotcha.
And, um, they want to extend their parking and their trucks and everything to that back lot.
Okay.
Uh, which has created quite a issue with the residents in the area with the diesel smells, the noise and everything. We, as an area commission, um, tabled the applicant at the time to come back and try to come to a happy medium with the residents. In the interim, um, the company has continued to do what they wanted to do and the residents are upset.
So they just went ahead and made, I didn't hear this part, so I'm assuming.
Yeah. Um, they, the residents have gone through, um, six on your side.
I haven't seen that.
They have, um, contacted all of our city officials, our, our development people, our zoning people, we, we all know about it. Um, we, we, right now, as an area commission, there, there's nothing we could, no more we can do. Uh, the applicant has to come back to us with some sort of adjustment, if any, for it's some, some, some sort of solution that the, that satisfies or semi-satisfies the residents in the area.
Okay, okay, well, I didn't know, I knew I'd see you here, I thought I would ask you. I don't know if the rest of the board heard anything like that.
We talked about this before.
If you need more information, let me know for the next meeting and I can bring you all of our documentation, I can bring you the application that they had submitted and.
I think just your explanation of it kinda makes sense. I know it's not township property, it's not township, but it borders the township. So I went, I just figured when I saw you today, I would just ask you real quick and that way everyone heard what you had to say, so I do appreciate that. And at this time, what I'll do is open the floor, is there any questions, like I normally do, from the audience? Here none, I close the floor, thank you. Um, next up, resolution on junk cars, so I'll let you take this over, ma'am, and this is where we just listen.
Right.
Take your time, don't feel like you gotta rush.
And, and, and Robin, something I found out, all you have to do is read the first one and then you can read on the rest of them, read the resolution number and the address. I did check on that.
Okay, so that will save us some time.
So, uh, from my understanding, these are vehicles that were identified, um, and reported into the office either through, um, other resources or through the trustees or whatever, but, um, that's where these came from. So, um, I will read the first resolution in, in its entirety and then we all do addresses and resolution numbers after that. Um, this is resolution twenty twenty-five dash one seven nine. This is a resolution declaring motor vehicles located at nine oh one Joyful Street, parcel number one four zero dash zero zero four nine seven two dash zero zero, Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, a junk motor vehicle and provided for its removal pursuant to Ohio Revise Code five oh five point eight seven one. Whereas the board trustees of Franklin Township pursuant to provisions of the Ohio Revise Code section five oh five point eight seven one have the authority to address the removal of junk vehicles by electing to implement the provision of the Ohio Revise Code section five oh five eight seven one. Whereas the board has found that there is a motor vehicle located at nine oh one Joyful Street, Columbus, Ohio, four three two oh four, in Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, known as parcel number one four zero dash zero zero four nine dash seven, let me back up, parcel number one four zero dash zero zero four nine seven two dash zero zero. The junk mo, motor vehicles that are at a three-year model or older, apparently inoperable, extensively damaged and otherwise constitutes a junk motor vehicle pursuant of sections five oh five point eight seven one and five oh five point one seven three of the Ohio Revise Code. Whereas in the best interest of Franklin Township and its residents to proceed under section five oh five point eight seven one of the Ohio Revise Code in order to remove or have removed the junk motor vehicle from the property. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Township Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the following resolution hereby be adopted. The board hereby determines that a motor vehicle located nine oh one Joyful Street, Columbus, Ohio, four three two oh four, parcel number one four zero dash zero zero four nine seven two dash zero zero, in the unincorporated area of the township, which may be generally described as a dark Ford van, silver Kia minivan, black four-door truck, is three model years or older, apparently inoperable and thus constitutes a junk motor vehicle as defined by section five oh five point one seven three of the Ohio Revise Code. The township shall provide for the removal of said junk motor vehicle for the property on which the vehicle is located, not sooner than fourteen days after the board serves this written notice of its intention to remove or cause removal of the vehicle on the owners of the land and any hold, holder of liens on the record of the land. Upon proper notice and failure of the proper owner to remove the junk vehicle within the fourteen days of service notice, the township shall provide for removal of said junk motor vehicle and the expenses thereof shall be certified by the deputy fiscal officer to the Franklin County Auditor, who shall place the expenses on the tax duplicate as they lean upon the property to be collected as other taxes and returned to the township's general fund. The board finds and determines that all formal actions of this board concerning and relating to the passage of this resolution were taken in open meeting of the board and that all deliberations of the board resulted in the formal actions were taken in a meeting open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including that not limited to Ohio Revise Code one two one point two two, except otherwise permitted thereby. This resolution shall take effective, well, shall take effect immediately upon its passage.
So before I accept that, um, Mr., uh, Mr. Leisure.
Yeah.
Do you, I almost said Stevens, do you, um, want to intervene as far as before I accept this, can the other addresses be read off and added to that right now or how shall we proceed in that?
They have, they have to, this has to be voted on.
Okay.
They, uh, cause they're each individually, um, those numbers are resolution numbers, individually they have to be read separately, just the address.
So.
And the action.
Okay.
Not all of it, but.
So I accept the, uh, the motion, we're gonna say this is a resolution as read. If there's no further questions, I would ask for a second.
I will second the resolution.
Having the second, we'll call ma'am when you're ready.
Trustee Fleishman?
Yes.
Trustee Laser?
Yes.
Trustee Blevins?
Yes. So now, we are getting a lot of these, instead of sitting here reading this four times, how do we proceed with the next one?
Uh, she would read the resolution number and the, the address and the description of the vehicles and parcel number.
Okay, ma'am.
Just that short little top part instead of reading all the resolution.
When you're ready.
So.
We'll do one at a time and vote on each one, correct, sir?
Mr., yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to scratch Chairman out.
Okay, yes, sir.
Just see.
Yes, sir. And when you're ready, ma'am. You caught that too, that's okay.
Apologies.
No worries.
Oh, no worries.
Alright, so this is gonna be resolution twenty twenty-five dash one eight zero. It's a resolution clearing motor vehicle located at eight three eight dash eight four zero, it's a duplex, uh, Durro Road, parcel number one four zero dash zero zero four nine zero six dash zero zero, Franklin Township, Franklin. Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, a junk motor vehicle and providing for its removal pursuant to Ohio Revised Code five oh five point eight seven one. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board, um, that the board approves the following resolution to hereby be adopted. The board hereby determines that a motor vehicle located at eight three eight eight dash eight four zero, Dura Road, Columbus four three two oh four, parcel number one four zero dash zero zero four nine zero six dash zero zero in an unincorporated area of Franklin Township, which may be generally described as a white Dodge Charger, black Nissan, Rango, Murano, excuse me, white Chevy truck and a gray minivan is three model years or older, apparently inoperable and thus constitutes a junk motor vehicle as defined by section five oh five point one seven three of the Ohio Revised Code. And then is it okay to just move down to?
Yes.
The section where it says the board finds and determines that all formal actions of this board concerning and related to the passage of this resolution were taken in open meeting of this board and that all deliberations of the board that resulted in former actions were taken in a meeting open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including that limited to Ohio Revised Code section one two one point two two. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon its passage.
I accept the resolution as read. If there's no further questions, I'd ask for a second.
I will second.
Now having the second, I'd ask for, we'll call when you're ready, ma'am.
Trustee Fleishman?
Yes.
Trustee Laser?
Yes.
Trustee Blommons?
Yes.
All right. Can we keep going?
Yes, sir, ma'am.
This is resolution twenty twenty-five dash one eight one. A resolution declaring, um, motor vehicles located at eight six nine dash eight seven one, Dura Road, parcel number one four zero dash zero zero four nine two nine dash zero zero, Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, a junk motor vehicle and providing for its removal pursuant to Ohio Revised Code five oh five point eight seven one. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the following resolution be and hereby adopted. The board hereby determines that a motor vehicle located at eight six nine dash eight seven one, Dura Road, Columbus, Ohio, four three two oh four parcel number one four zero dash zero zero four nine two nine dash zero zero in the unincorporated area of the township, which has been generally described as a deteriorated RV with tarps and handmade wooden framing, is a three model year or older, apparently inoperable and thus constitutes a motor vehicle, a junk motor vehicle as defined by section five oh five point one seven three of the Ohio Revised Code. The board finds and determines that all formal actions of this board concerning and related to the passage of this resolution were taken in open meeting of the board and that all deliberations of the board that resulted in former actions were taken in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including but not limited to the Ohio Revised Code section one two one point two two, except as otherwise permitted thereby. The resolution shall take effect immediately upon its passage.
Hearing the resolution, I accept it as, as read. If there's no further questions, I'd ask for a second.
I will second.
With the second, I ask for, we'll call when ready.
Trustee Fleishman?
Yes.
Trustee Laser?
Yes.
Trustee Blommons?
Yes.
We're getting there.
All right, moving right on. All right, this is resolution twenty twenty-five dash one eight two. A resolution declaring a motor vehicle located at eleven oh three Harrisburg Pike, parcel number one four zero dash zero zero two nine nine four dash zero zero. Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, a junk motor vehicle and providing for its removal pursuant to Ohio Revised Code five oh five point eight seven one. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Trustees, the Township Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the following resolution be and hereby adopted. The board hereby determines that a motor vehicle located at eleven oh three Harrisburg Pike, Columbus, Ohio, four three two two three parcel number one four zero dash zero zero two nine nine four dash zero zero in the unincorporated area of the township, which may be generally described as a marine Suzuki sidekick is rusted, missing side panels and important operating parts in a deteriorating condition and three model years or older, apparently inoperable and thus constitutes a junk motor vehicle as defined by section five oh five point one seven three of the Ohio Revised Code. The board finds and determines that all formal actions of the board concerning and related to the passage of this resolution was taken in open meeting of the board and that all deliberations of the board that resulted in a former action were taken in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including but not limited to the Ohio Revised Code section one two one point two two, except as otherwise permitted thereby. The resolution shall take effect immediately upon its passage.
I accept the resolution in, in its entirety as read. If there's no further question, I would ask for a second.
I will second.
With the second, I would ask for, we'll call when ready.
Trustee Fleishman?
Yes.
Trustee Laser?
Yes.
Trustee Blommons?
Yes.
So gentlemen, while she's getting ready, are you guys good with like between four and five on every meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, it seems to be.
Okay, so we just wanted to check with you guys.
Um, I believe I'm gonna speak on the next resolution, um, before, before it's read.
Okay.
Um, I, I am asking the board for, for this resolution to be, to be passed for time, for paid time off for staff members that attended the funeral of, um, Scooter. I'm just gonna say Scooter because that's what we all know him by, um, on Monday. And, um, it's unprecedented. The reason why the resolution is it's, it's an unprecedented event. It's not covered by any collective bargaining agreement and it's not covered by any MOU or anything like that, but it is the right thing to do for our family here at Franklin Township. Ma'am, if you'd read the resolution.
And before we do that, I would like to say something. Bob, I was gonna wait until you got up there. You know, a lot of times we hear, what does the city do for us with mutual aid? Um, mutual aid, what Bob does and the fire department does, they take the politics, if you wanna call this politics, out of it. What are we making, whatever? They just keep their head down and they do their job. They keep us safe. Bob, were you, who manned the station while we went and grieved over losing one of our men?
A bunch of volunteers from Madison Township Fire.
Okay, okay. So, so one of the things by having mutual aid in different departments, they came and manned the stations so that our men and women could go to this unoppressive, um, huge turnout. You couldn't even get in the church. Um, it was a great showing and it was the great love and support that, uh, Mr. Mullins had given us. Mr. Mullins is synonymous for in this township. Um, he was the second generation and even his son is the third generation that is on. I just want to commend, when I hear all the time, sometimes we can't always get on our side. We want to protect the township, the runs that we take. We do usually get somewhere between eight hundred, nine hundred thousand in EMS billing, is that correct, a year? Somewhere in that range. So it's, it's nice, there's two sides to having something like that. Um, because when something does happen, you have other departments that can't come. Now, if we did not have EMS billing, would they still have come and helped? Most likely, because they are brothers, they are firefighters and et cetera. But mostly, the reason I'm speaking before this resolution is I want to, um, see if you will craft a letter and let the board sign and, um, let us make a appropriation or, um, a resolution in thanking them this day for what they've done for Scooter, um, and bring it to the next meeting if you would. And then we will see if the board will entertain a signature with a resolution thanking all volunteers that came and, um, kept the fire department going while the funeral was going on. So.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, and I believe House twelve, Columbus House twelve filled in too, right, taking runs.
Mutual aid.
Okay.
I'm sure they took some runs.
Okay. So in, in my interruption, sir, I apologize. I am now, we're, 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 were you ready to do a second?
I have a question.
Nope, she has to read it.
Sorry. Okay.
So I guess I'm confused because I heard John say EMS billing. What did that have to do with, I'm just confused.
Okay, no worries.
No, I'm asking Bob.
No, I think he just misspoke. I think he meant to say mutual aid when he said EMS.
Okay, okay, so.
My apologies. Thank you for catching that.
No, I'm just trying to clarify it in my own head because I, I'm sure where this is headed is that I'm talking about, um, mutual aid and things like that and everything. And so I'm assuming this is, uh, the opportunity to, uh, take a shot my way. And so I just wanted to clarify, I didn't understand. And you said Madison?
Yes, sir. Madison Township.
And, and where are they located?
Riverport.
Riverport Canal.
Okay. No, I'm, I, I was aware of, uh, you and I had already spoke. You'd already given me all that information, but I just, so.
Okay, so I apologize if you thought.
No, no, I'm just saying, I'm just trying to figure it out.
I don't wanna do that. That's not what we're here to do. I apologize if it came across wrong. I did want to, my deepest thank you to those that did that because I can only imagine his crew trying to wanna work and not be at the funeral, but yet keep their mind on public safety. So that was great that that was taking place. At that point, I'm gonna move on.
Okay.
Okay, I already lost where I'm at. I'm sure you'll keep me in line, so go ahead.
Yeah, we just gotta read, are we, are we good to read now?
Yeah.
We're waiting on you to read the resolution.
Okay, perfect. I just wanna make sure. Uh, so it's resolution twenty twenty-five dash one eight three. The resolution authorizing paid time off for staff to attend funeral. Whereas Franklin Township recognizes the dedicated service of employee Carville Mullins the third and whereas several township staff members attended the funeral and or graveside ceremony held in his honor on Monday, October the twenty-seventh. And whereas the board of trustees wishes to provide paid time off for those employees in recognition of their attendance and support for the Mullins family. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board here, hereby retroactively authorizes paid time off for those staff members of Franklin Township who attended the funeral and or graveside ceremony for employee Carville Mullins the third or Scooter on Monday, October the twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. Said authorization shall provide up to five hours of approval of paid time off as provided by the township. Employees covered by this resolution shall not be required to use their personal or vacation leave balances for this time. The payroll specialist is hereby directed to ensure that the notation is made on each affected employee's payroll record for proper payroll processing and documentation. Be it further resolved that our formal actions of the board concerning and relating to the adoption of this resolution were passed in an open meeting of the board and that all deliberations of the board and, and of any of its committees that result in such formal actions of the meetings were open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including section one two one point two two of the Ohio Revised Code. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall be declared an emergency and be in full force and effective immediately upon its adoption.
That was well written, well written.
That was a hard one, too.
I I accept the resolution as written. If there's no further question on said resolution, I would ask for a second.
I will gladly second it.
And we'll call when you're ready, ma'am.
Trustee Fleishman?
Yes.
Trustee Laser?
Yes.
Trustee Blommons?
Yes.
Back in there. And when you're ready, is that, are we, do you have?
Okay, a few more.
Okay, yeah, when you're ready.
Yeah. Um, this one came through, um, this morning or, or later the eve, this evening, yesterday evening, when the advisement of our attorney. So this is the resolution. Let me just read it and then we can have some discussion if need be. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one eight six. A resolution recognizing the passage of firefighter Carville Scooter Mullins the third and authorizing the cash out of accrued leave pursuant to the collective bargaining agreement within local AF, AIFF local fourteen forty-one. Whereas the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, recognizes with deep regret the passing of firefighter Carville Scooter Mullins the third, a dedicated employee of Franklin Township. Whereas the provisions of the collective bargaining agreement with the International Association of Firefighters Local fourteen forty-one, the township is responsible for compliance with the provisions related in Article twenty sick leave, Article twenty-six vacation leave, Article sixteen compulsory time and Article twenty-seven holiday leave. And whereas sick leave, sick leave, sick leave was a total of three thousand fifty-one hours, fifty-one point twenty-two hours. Compensatory time was a negative, that should be a negative, John, it's just a negative fifteen. It didn't come on there very well. It's kinda squished, but it's a negative fifteen hours and we can explain. Vacation leave three hundred and eighty point eleven hours, holiday leave at ninety-six hours. Leaves a total balance of three thousand five hundred and twelve point thirty-three hours at twenty-eight dollars and six cents per hour. Whereas the total cash, cash out amount due to the above accrued leave time is ninety-eight thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the deputy fiscal officer is hereby authorized and directed to process the cash out of three thousand five hundred and twelve point thirty-three hours of accrued leave time for firefighter Culver, Carville, Scooter Mullins the third, in accordance with the applicable provisions of the collective bargaining agreement for a total payment of ninety-eight thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents. Our former actions of the board concerning and relating to the adoption of this resolution were adopted in open meeting of the board, all deliberations of the board and its committees that resulted in such action were conducted in meetings open to the public in compliance with section one two one point two two of the Ohio Revised Code. Be it further resolved that this resolution is hereby declared to be an emergency and shall take, um, effect immediately upon its adoption. So the negative number, uh, Bob, can you explain how the negative number works with the compulsory time?
So the full-time firefighters are upfront, three hours per pay at the beginning of the year. So if that bank of hours is exhausted and they leave before the end of the year, they obviously owe back any time that they were paid for or used this time off, uh, before the end of the year.
So I wanted to just clarify, the, a check for him would be ninety-eight thousand dollars and this covers all the sick time, vacation time and.
Everything outlined here.
Yeah, okay. So my question would be, now that he is deceased, does that go in a check for, in the name of his spouse? Or how do we get that money, just out of curiosity, to the family?
It would be to his beneficiary, um, because that, the life insurance that he had with the township is beneficiary is listed and so the check would be payable to, um, the beneficiary on file.
I was just curious, I guess more nosy than anything, because I just didn't know if we had to make it to Mr. Mullins or something of that nature and then was it gonna make it more difficult for the family to deposit that?
CBA, it says.
Okay.
Written to the surviving spouse.
That's, that's great. I mean, I figured there was a way, but I didn't know how. With that being said, I would, um, I'd like to accept the resolution as written. If there's any further questions?
I, I, my only question is, is it comes out of the, uh, fire department's budget and we're in a shape, I mean, they have the money, I just.
Yes, um, that's a great question. Um, I, I sat down with Janet and with Bob this morning and we collectively, um, looked at both fire and EMS. And we have, we've collectively, the funds will come out of multiple accounts, uh, but nothing that's gonna jeopardize the operation of the department. Um, Mr. Kirby will be here, um, next week and so we will be sitting down with him to make sure that that all makes sense, what we're recommending, what Bob's recommending as the, as the chief of the department. And then what will happen from that point is we will have to come back to the board with a supplemental appropriation resolution before the check can be cut, because then you guys have to authorize that it's okay, these accounts that we're gonna use to move the money to the fire department. Um, and, and we have a line item that we can, we'll put all the money in. And that way, it'll all come through the supplemental appropriation to your attention.
For that, okay.
And we will have that at the next meeting?
Yes, I mean, I mean, if, if we're able to do it possibly before, but again, in talking with Bob, the, the family is okay. And if we need to wait till the next meeting, you know, we can certainly do that, but we wanna get, at least wanna get with Mr. Kirby to make sure we have everything lined up for you guys.
Okay. So if there's no further questions, I would ask for a second.
I will second.
I have a second on the resolution and if you will, uh, make the roll call when ready.
Uh huh. Trustee Fleishman?
Yes.
Trustee Laser?
Yes.
Trustee Blommons?
Yes.
And when will it go, ma'am?
And Trustee Laser, did you wanna say any discussions on this, uh, Manic Smith group that Julie sent this morning?
Um, no.
So is it okay to read?
Yeah.
Okay. So now that, um, she had sent it to. Okay, so now that, um, she had sent it to you
Yeah.
as the contact person, and then.
I will answer any questions.
Okay, so you, she copied me just so I could compile the resolution? Okay, um, this is Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one eight-seven, a resolution approving agreement with Manic Smith Group. Whereas Manic Smith Group has proposed a contract, a contract for professional services, whereas the Board desires to authorize the adoption and execution of the agreement, whereas it is in the best interest of the Township for the Board of Trustees to adopt and whereas into the agreement. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the Board on the following resolution be adopted. That the Board hereby adopts and approves the form of the agreement, together with any such changes herein and amendments thereto, not inconsistent with the resolution and not adverse to the Township, the Board hereby authorizes and empowers and appoints on behalf of the Board of, and the Township, James Leeser, trustee, the representative to execute the agreement, and substantially that, form on file with the Township along with any changes or amendments thereto, provided that the approval of these changes and amendments by the representative and the character of those changes and amendments are not to be inconsistent with this resolution or adverse to the Township, and shall be evidenced conclusively by the representative's execution of the agreement. Furthermore, the representative is authorized to, and on behalf of the Township, take any and all action and execute any and all documents that are necessary to be completed by the Township in order to finalize the agreement. Be it further resolved that the Board finds and determines that all formal actions of the Board concerning and relating to the passage of this resolution were taken in an open meeting of the Board, and that all deliberations of this Board that resulted in such formal actions in a meeting open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, be it further resolved that this resolution shall be declared an emergency and be in full force and effective immediately upon its adoption.
Okay, I'm gonna pause for a second and apologize for that, there must be a new way of spam calls. Even though it's on silent, I still rang, I didn't realize, so, um, my apologies, now I know I can just turn the volume all the way down and that can't happen again, so my apologies.
Um, the, just, I, I just wanted to state that this is a follow-up resolution to the one we passed beginning of September, authorizing them to be the recipient of the, um, grant money.
And it's, uh, pointing you as the person?
Point person.
Yeah.
The contact person.
Correct, okay. Um, I accept the resolution as read. Um, is there any other questions on said resolution? Here are none, I would ask for a second. You got, did you second? You're, you can't second it.
I can't second it, okay.
I can't second it.
I'll second it. Now I do have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
So.
Uh-huh.
This was not in, I don't believe this was in my packet.
It came this morning from Julie.
On an email.
Yeah.
So. Are we talking about, you're gonna have to tell me, it's very vague.
It's, it's, it's authorizing the, them to do the work of the design. Okay.
The, the million dollar grant money.
That's what I wanted to make sure.
The million dollars that we got from the state, Ohio, for, um, the Boulevard, that's what I thought we were talking about, but I wanted to make sure.
And it is authorizing the payment of that to Manic and Smith, where we all, they're already authorized them to start working on it. When did, when did Mr. Major leave, it was a meeting before Mr. Major left.
It's exactly what I thought was when I seconded, and I'm good to go, I just needed to make sure because I went through this twice, and I, I don't remember seeing any of that, but I just wanted to make sure, so I, I, I know exactly what we're talking about, and I can second it, so.
Okay, any other questions from the Board? Here are none, I, I asked for a roll call when ready.
Trustee Fleishman?
Yes.
Trustee Leeser?
I will exchange since my name is on there.
Trustee Blevins?
Yes.
And you, I said yes, correct, got you, I'm kinda wanna make sure.
So you don't, you still.
I'm not gonna sign that.
John, and I'll take it.
Right.
There you go.
Okay. So, um, next, sir, um, if you would, we have, um, public comments, we have three, it looks like. And just remember, we're keeping our times to three minutes, uh, and you can call the first person?
Um, well, Mr. Smith has already spoken, so it would be send you calling. Voting is yours.
You know, we were kind of surprised, Jim, that she didn't show up Monday night, we had a good time. Um, what's an excused absence? And how often are trustees allowed to miss, et cetera, et cetera? And when you aren't here, do you guys get paid? Cause I, I've never seen anything on it, I'm just, I'm clueless, so I thought I'd ask. And I know that when I was not retired, I had to have an excused absence and had to have paperwork on it. And another thing that's been bugging me, how come the audit hasn't been released, that's been out for what, two years? And we still haven't gotten anything on that at all? And I'm just trying to figure out what the heck's going on, so. You know. It's kind of a synopsis.
Okay, um, the first question, what is an excused absence, if I, if I get these right, and then you can.
Yeah.
You'll, you'll just tell me, you can go ahead and stop, you did. Um, excuse absence is, we know that the person's not gonna be here.
Okay.
Um, how many can you have, it's not clear what is stated. Um, what was the second one?
And I just asked, how many are you allowed to miss, and you said it's not stated?
Um, it's, it goes with how many in a row, if I believe, I remember right, we can check mentally, but from the classes in which I take, and if you miss four consecutive meetings in a row, then you are considered absent.
Yeah, I just didn't know.
Yeah, that's fine.
You know, why not find out?
And, you know, the thing is, I may, I may have to look that up, but I remember four, that if you missed four consecutive meetings.
Is that in the OTA handbook?
Yes, that should be in the handbook.
Okay, I can look that up, and.
What was the other one?
Audit.
The audit.
Yeah.
Um, at this time, um, the last email that I had from Julie is, they were, they pulled it and said they would get back to us when it's ready. They're supposed to send us a copy of whatever, and then we meet at a final, what do you wanna call that, the, uh,
Exit interview.
Exit interview, and then it would be released, so.
Does that take three years for her, or what, I mean?
I don't know.
It's in the state's hands.
And then there was something, was there something else?
Yeah, I just, Jim, I just got a goofy-ass question, cause I don't know. Um, did the County Republican Party help you when you ran for trustee the last time, too?
I will not discuss, I will not.
Okay, well, I know I saw his postcard, but we didn't get one, and it's like, well, why not, I'm right here, so. I'm just kind of curious, cause there were some different things, it's like, why the heck hasn't this audit come out and different stuff like that, and I guess maybe I need to dive deeper into that book. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, next on the list?
Linda Vollwerth.
And this is one we just did, is that correct, is this why it's sitting here from your sign?
Uh, yeah.
One eighty-two?
Yep. Let me set this for her.
Okay, ma'am, the floor is yours.
I just wanna say publicly, Leeser, that I did not take any of your sign.
I will not discuss campaign.
Just let me finish. I've been going through, picking them up when they've been falling over, everybody's, not just mine, everybody's. And mine are missing, too. And, you know, I had, I, I literally caught you, I was sitting on my front porch.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, and I, and you said, hurry up, get back in the car, to your buddy, but that, that's okay, my neighbor down the grove got your head in the back end of your car when you put your sign right in front of mine. And, uh, you know, I just wanna say, I'm not holding it against you, I, I don't want any bad feelings in any way with any of us. And, you know, I wish both of you the best of luck, and that's what I came up here to say.
Well, thank you. And, and there's one, is that all?
That's it.
Okay, moving on from public comments, uh, we are going to, um, Lieutenant Ratliff is not here, Chief, you're.
Yep.
It's the chief, we got the chief back.
We got the new chief.
That was our.
Bionic chief.
Let's see here. Um, so the holiday or the summertime overtime traffic, uh, stats, I believe you had the actual stats, I think, last meeting. Um, so I got with Robin this morning, they worked a total of a hundred and twenty-nine hours for a total of six thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and twenty-six cents. I believe the resolution set a twelve thousand dollar limit, so they came in way under that. Um, I think it was very effective, and it was something we should definitely look into doing on a continual basis as we can, especially during the summer months. Any, any questions, or?
I would, I would just say I would have to agree with you, I think it was effective throughout the township.
Yeah, I think so, too. Um, okay, so a few complaints that I wanted to talk about. We will start with, uh, the area of Lennet and Shady Lane, I think the address was seventeen sixty-two. Uh, you cannot legally park within twenty feet of a stop sign or an intersection. Uh, you cannot park going the wrong way on the other side of the street, you gotta park with the traffic flow. Uh, so that's being addressed, um, criminally, as far as we do it. Whether or not you can park a commercial vehicle there, I do not believe that the county has any such zoning code. I think we've addressed this with a few, uh, semi trucks, and they said there is nothing. Um, but we can look into that with zoning, once we get the first issue resolved.
Cause really, with that being a commercial piece of vehicle, we're within that, it's really skewing the view of the stop sign when you're coming up, because you can't see around that truck where it's coming.
Yeah, which is where that twenty-foot rule comes in.
Twenty or thirty?
Twenty.
Twenty feet?
Um, so that's been tagged. Okay, um, it's not in the intersection, not in the roadway, so we have to tag it for seventy-two hours. If it's still there or parked that way, then.
So it's not ticketed, it's just tagged that you.
Tag for removal.
Oh, and then what happens, he moves it, and then tomorrow he comes back?
Well, if he turns it the other way
Yeah.
and makes it twenty feet from the stop sign.
No, what I'm saying is, okay, you tagged it, tomorrow he goes to work, tomorrow evening he comes home, parks in the same spot. Does that count, is there, does the clock start over?
We don't have a camera on it, so if it's like, if it's like that in seventy-two hours, it's gonna get in the house.
Okay, gotcha.
You know, it even is.
I just.
We have to be reasonable, but.
Right, but, you know, sometimes people say if you move your car two feet, and then you start, the clock starts all over. I'm just trying to understand the game.
Once we know, if we know it, and you can articulate, yeah, it's obvious it's been moved, then technically it would.
So in other words, it just says it, just to make sure that people understand at home, so where it's sitting now, so tomorrow he's like two feet back or two feet forward, does it still count as the seventy-two hours, because while he was at work, he just came back and moved it twelve inches, sixteen inches forward?
Yeah, you still can't be within twenty feet.
Right, but does the clock start over and you write another one?
No.
Okay. You see what I'm trying to do?
I do, I do. Um, it's about, you know, you gotta be reasonable in, in perception. Um, Humphrey, so I looked at the sign, the sign that's on the telephone pole does not pertain to the roadway, it's not a legal roadway sign that pertains to private property.
Okay.
Um, it would, as you look at that sign, it would, when I see a sign like that, it pertains to like the driveway or the garage in front of it, or whatever.
Okay.
Uh, where if you, if you park there and the owner calls and tow company, they'll come out and tow your car. It's a small driveway, so if someone would park there, honestly, they don't need to sign because we can tow your car if you're blocking the driveway anyway. That's typically used when you have a bigger parking lot, where you're not necessarily a violation of blocking the driveway.
So what I would like to intervene on this is, um, when I was on Humphrey, I talked to several different residents, and it came to my attention that this is being used as, at the end of the street, in today's world, I totally understand, the bus drops off kids. And that, now Humphrey's not a long walk, but, you know, you don't want young girls, young men, a, uh, grade school age, walking down the street by yourself. So the parents usually go to the end of the street, they park right there, not blocking the driveway, and the gentleman will come out and tell them they have to leave, or I'll have you tow. It's my understanding that before he bought the house, the current owner had passed away. There was multiple, uh, I don't like to use the word junk cars, but cars that were in Optimal, and in order for going through a survey, in order to remove the vehicles, uh, Broad and James had to put up a sign, go through the process, and then the person that was in charge of the estate could call and get all the cars removed. Broad and James left the sign, and the new owners, um, purchased the property, and the sign remains. My question is, would, would, uh, can we contact Broad and James and say, hey, are you enforcing this sign, or do you wanna keep the sign? And maybe they come out and take their own sign down and end the issue.
Either, either way, it's gonna be a mute point because of the size of, like, we would enforce it.
Right, but the mute point to us, it's not a mute point to the residents that are afraid to park there because of the sign in order to pick up their children. Because he's using that as a weapon, irregardless of what we know.
Right.
It's what the residents know, can we make a call to them, can you make a call and say, hey, this address has a sign up? Um, do you wish to enforce it, or do you wish to take it down?
We, we can ask the question, true.
Yeah, please do.
But it, it does not, in any, any way, shape, or form.
I get you, I, 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 I understand.
I understand, if, if the person parked on the road picking up their child is not blocking the driveway.
Right.
And they have an issue with the resident, all they have to do is call.
Right. We can alleviate a lot of this if you do make the call, and if they were like, yeah, we'll take it down, that was from two years ago, and they left a sign, because Broad and James, I'm sure, does not wanna sign up somewhere where they don't have a contract, is what I'm getting at.
I would assume not.
So if we notify them that, you know, they have a, a sign from two years ago, um, and exactly what this Board is saying, or at least me, I know other Board members have sat, have looked at it, and I'll let them comment on it if they want, and he tried to tell them, leave. So it's, it's used as a weapon, is what it's using.
No, I, I get it, um, yeah, I, I don't see the parents leaving, I mean, that seems a little.
They do, because he comes out and is more voiceful with them, and they're scared of him.
Oh, oh, they'll need to, I mean, we could talk to them, but.
Well, yeah, well, let's first just see if we can get rid of the sign, that takes care of it, because chances of him getting another sign.
I like the chiefs of the, I do, talk to the gentleman, let him know he can't police the street, you know, that would be a bigger solution to the issue.
We'll deal with it if a criminal, but we, yeah, I will call Broad and James and see what they do.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
He'll tell me to pound sand, but I'll certainly report back next meeting. Um, so Peabody, so, just, just so we're all clear again, the grassy area that is owned by CSX, we cannot tow cars off of their lots under any circumstances unless it's stolen, on fire, or something criminal. Um, the owner, which is CSX, has to call Broad and James to tow those cars.
Okay.
We can't legally do it, you guys will get sued.
I understand.
I don't want you getting sued. Um, so, I got the Jim Stevens, we now have the no parking signs uh, on both sides of the roadway, where the Board had originally wanted them. And that's taken care of today, I think we've already towed one car.
Today?
Today, so that they could take the signs in.
Okay.
Um, we cannot block somebody's driveway or something like that with a sign. Otherwise, that sign doesn't mean anything, cause you can't legally do that. But we have them where they can't park, went down through there yesterday with Jim, it looked better than it has in years.
Well, I'd like to thank you for, um, your due diligence, um, as I've been going around the township on my little scooter bike, uh, even in my vehicle, when I go through there, and I went through there today, many a times I'm stopped and told, you can't come through here because they've got the roadblock with uh, like big tow truck that you back stuff off, they said, go around.
Go around.
And I'm like, no, and they said, well, go around the signs and go around, and I'm like, that says private property, I can't drive on private property, go around. I said, you can't hold this street up, and then it's F you, and this, that, and the other, and I just rolled the window back up, and then I took a few photos, and that escalated it, and I just sat there. Eventually the road opened, took about fifteen minutes, but it was a point that I was gonna sit there and not be bullied to tell, tell me I have to turn around and go the other way.
Yeah, we talked to, I don't know if it's yet or not, because there was a little bit of a language barrier.
Well, I was, he knows the American number one, that's for sure.
Yeah, they were, they were told to have the cars moved, so that the signs could be erected today.
Can you get with, um, Nicole and see, is he the owner or someone else the owner? Can you get with, um, Nicole and see, is he the owner, or is someone else the owner? And can we ask the actual owner, send a letter, and ask them to come before the board, so that we can, um, explain to him what's going on with his property and his tenant?
Sure.
Okay, maybe he could be at the next meeting, the owner.
Good answer.
Okay.
Wasn't there an issue with, uh, a sign being on a utility pole or something like that, or is that a difference?
No, that was the one on Humphrey. Um, if there is a legality with that, it would probably be between Broad. First of all, a legitimate towing company knows where they can, and can't put their signs.
Right.
Because, again, there is some liability. So, if there is an issue, it would be with the public utility that utilizes that pole. If there, probably a zoning issue.
Isn't that the place that he asked you to make a phone call to, or is that?
Yes.
So when you have a phone call, conversation with them, can you ask them if they are comfortable?
Telephone pole?
If they're comfortable putting that on the telephone pole like that, please? I'm just, if, the question was asked to me, so I'm asking you, that's all. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Carry on.
That's all I have.
Welcome back.
Well, welcome back. So, man, I feel like I'm just, I'm not gonna be able to speak the rest of the day, I spoke so much today, and I apologize to you guys. Um, one of the things that I am seeing a lot of, that I, I don't care for, and I've been sending some photos to you, et cetera. I was going down sixty-two, in front of Don's, Old Don's Meat Market, or whatever it was called, as I spoke to you about. Our officers are out more than I am. Can we start addressing when they see that, not ask them to move, to actually start ticketing? Because a lot of that car lot is now, uh, the story is, I'm coming down sixty-two, and a car pulls in, and I'm like, five o'clock in the evening, everyone knows what sixty-two, one, five o'clock in the evening, and there's nowhere for me to get around. So the owner come out, I said, can you ask her to move? And he goes, oh, yeah, she, she's dropping off somebody, and I sat there, and sat there, and sat there. I said, excuse me, ma'am, are you gonna scoot up, or I don't wanna get in traffic to go around you? And she's like, well, this is the berm. I said, it's also a pedestrian walkway, it's the berm, it's so wide, it's wide as a car.
It's dumb driving.
And he spoke to me a little bit, and I'm like, why do you have so many, how many cars do you sell a month? You got cars everywhere.
Yeah.
And he's like, well, we have the people park here in order to see the cars. I said, but your, people can't walk up and down through here, there's an average of three deaths a year, most likely, cause we hear them all the time on sixty-two. He goes, well, I'm gonna start having people park out back. I said, well, if you have that option, please do it. So, not only with that, even on down, it used to be the pond, the pond cars and those. I know that's in the city, but with, with the, we're being inundated in that area. Um, I sent a picture today to Lieutenant Ratliff, the sidewalk comes up, and now there's a, a. Let me just pull it up. I took a picture on the way in, and it, it just irritated me, because I've been using the sidewalks, not trying to get killed going around the township. And it just is aggravated, and if I'm aggravated, what about the people that they use that as a way to get to work? They walk, they ride, but if you look at this, behind it, the sidewalk, you, you have no choice but to go in the street.
Right.
And my question is, he, he's blocking his own driveway, but there's, now in order for someone to go around it, they have to walk in the street. So, our officers have to be able to see some of this as they walk, I mean, as they're out driving. I grant it that they are very busy from run to run, I've rode with them, I understand that. But in order to facilitate some of this in the township, I would encourage to have the talk with the officers to, when you see cars parked and facing the wrong way, ticket them. When they're parked in the berm and, and blocking pedestrian walkways that we've had multiple deaths on, ticket them.
We do. Uh, it's an ongoing thing, especially with that car lot up, up by Ransford. Um, we towed a lot of cars, ticketed a lot more, so we'll, we'll make sure we continue to do it.
So, if I can at this point, board, I'd like to, to bring Nicole, if she's in or out here, if she could, Nicole?
I think she's taking her.
She's picking the kids up.
She's what?
She's picking the kids up. She's not here.
She's not here.
Oh, she's not here, I'm like, there's her kids in here? Um, I know Nicole probably has an update, because I know that that is on accounting, as far as, you know, the cars are everywhere.
Yeah.
Um, but little things like this, it's not picking on people, but they are taking advantage of the kindness of what we're doing, and in my opinion, unlawfully thumbing their nose at you. And we just drive by, in my opinion. So the more of that that I see, it just aggravates me, and that's, you know, like, today, I went through Peabody on the way here on purpose.
Right.
Just to take a look at that.
There she is.
And Nicole?
Yeah.
If I may? So we're having a discussion about, um, the car lot that is, uh, where Don's Meat Market is, and I apologize for just blinding you on this. So we had an issue with, um, I was going up through there, and I couldn't get through unless I went into traffic, because the pedestrian walkway on the berm, they're parking cars, and I couldn't get through. Yeah, I'm sorry?
I don't know.
It's, I think, is it nineteen sixty-four, the one on Harrisburg?
On the right hand side.
Car wash, right hand side.
And the cars are all down in the grass, and.
Where they took tobacco down in, and.
Yeah.
So I know Kim has been on that, the guy came out and talked to me, and I said, I see so many code violations here, but I'm not a code enforcement, I'm a trustee. I said, how is it that you, long story short, letting people park here? And he's like, well, where else are they to park to look at the cars?
Well, that's their problem.
Right, and that's exactly what I explained to him. But he then filled me in and said that, um, Kim said everything's fine, that she, that they threw gravel down, and that solidifies. So where are we at that you know? Are they continuing to, to press forward?
From, the last I heard from Kelsey was, they were, there's so many things that are out of compliance. They were basically gonna look back at the original site plans, um, to just revert back to that and tell them they have to come into compliance starting from there, because I believe they sent them letters telling them certain things that needed to be done, and they weren't being addressed. Um, and I believe that plans that were submitted from two zoning either were not approved, or they were approved but timed out, because there was no work done in the timeframe, which is one year of expiration. So, last I heard from Kelsey is, they basically are going back to the beginning, saying, this is what you need to come into compliance with, and that's the move forward.
Okay, and then I know, and I'm taking up too much time with everybody, but there must be five hundred cars in that two-block radius on both sides of the street. Um, even like the old pond shop, which was the auto pond, that's in the city now. Are they addressing, I mean, they're parking on the sidewalk, the semis.
Yeah, so.
That's the city of Columbus.
The way that lot, well, the way that lot splits is, it's, you have the Paleys, and then the auto pond area that you're talking about, and then you have where they're doing the semi work. And it's a four parcel, but it splits down diagonally.
And we have the back part.
We have the back part, and the front part comes up like this to a point, like a triangle, which is the city. So technically, where they're doing the semi repairs, that's us, people they've submitted a permit with us for a change, change of use to a semi repair shop. I, I haven't seen them parking on the sidewalk, but I have seen them literally parking on the seam of the sidewalk and the pavement. Um, I've, I've brought it up before, I.
Okay, if we can, if, do we have any authority there if we see that? Because is that city of Columbus?
It is the city of Columbus, I mean, we have the authority to enforce criminal violations.
Okay, so I think I've said enough. Anything else from board?
Oh, the only thing I'll add, just for time, is, I used to sit back where Brenda's sitting today and complain about that same piece of property.
I've pronounced property, man.
And I've been here two years, you know, so they are exactly what you said, they're just thumbing their nose at us until we get a little bit of bite in our bark.
Yeah, I spent a lot of time, I spent a week up and down through there every day, and I'm just like, holy moly. And, um, maybe I should've spent more time before that, but that's generally not the way that I go home. So, um, that's why I was adamant about what I'm seeing, is because I'm thinking the residents that live around here throwing their hands up, like, what's the township doing? And I've heard that from residents that I've talked to, like, well, you guys aren't doing anything, but, I don't like, trust me, at the next meeting, I'm gonna bring it to the attention. So, at this point in time, if there's nothing else from the board, I would ask, uh, open the floor for any quick questions. Here or none, I will close the floor.
Thank you, Keith.
And thank you, and moving along, Fire Department.
Good afternoon, I just wanted to publicly thank everyone for the overwhelming support and outreach, outreach and sympathy for the passing of Scooter. We're blown away. The fire service is truly, uh, a family, and we had help from all over the state. Um, and of course, every department here was represented in some fashions, so thank you all. I think we did him right, and laid him a rest, uh, in a way that he very much deserves. Thank you all. Uh, other than that, I don't have anything for you guys today.
Okay, um, anything from the board? I'm gonna open the floor for any quick questions. Here or none, I close the floor. I thank you, sir, and thank you for your due diligence and everything that you did, um, on behalf of the Mullins family. Moving along, Fiscal Department.
No, you got Road Department.
Road, oh, did I skip them? You've got the Road Department.
Yeah, Mr., Mr., Mr. Stevens is out, um, but he did leave a few things with myself. I have asked him, passed it over to John, um, I'll give that to Robin, um, for the records. Um, it is an update on the bid proposal for the speed.
Calming devices.
Calming devices, thank you. Um, six of them throughout the township. The one note is, if you're looking, if you look at the bid proposal, the bid proposal is for three, uh, thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, and we can take seven thousand five hundred dollars off of that, because our crews can do the signs, he told me. But that's for us to look over, and, um.
Are we asking for a resolution now? He's not here.
No, we, we have to, I mean, it's not right to bring it into the hub and do a resolution on it, so I would ask a resolution for the next meeting.
Okay. Um, do you want me to talk about the?
Yes.
Okay, so, as you know, one of our biggest streets that cut through is Hopkins, that's, has a lot of speed, and there's a lot of people that blow through, um, the intersections, there's been, last, uh, two years ago, a gentleman on a motorcycle lost his life, uh, there was a big accident just a couple weeks ago, and a lot of the residents is asking, can we get the stop signs that blink? And so there is a, Jim did the research on being able to put a couple down through there. I asked Jim too, if we, you know, there's other places in the township that we would need to look at, these solar flashing lights. I think I can pass this around as I speak.
There's one for each of us.
Is there one for each? There we go, I didn't know how we had that. Um, hopefully in the future, I talked with Jim, and out of his budget, with the road, that there could be monies, but not for this year, that we would look at trying to, um, find fundings, or, or a line item when we do the budget. So this is just talking about it ahead of time, and, and trying to put this in the budget for next year. Um, the signs, the price of the signs is a thousand dollars, a thousand forty dollars and fifty cents per sign. Um, and some of the stuff that we can do, uh, the Road Department would do, with mounting and et cetera, et cetera. Um, so, this I just wanted to bring to the board's attention today, um, if that's something that, um, we wish to move on, uh, for the near future. Any questions? Okay, so we're gonna move on to, now I will say, Physical Department.
Janet, so, um, I do have a few things today, um, to let you know that I am continuing to meet with Mr. Kirby on budgeting and the bankruptcy solvency. And, um, I did, um, there was a meeting with Otama yesterday that Robin invited me to sit in on too, so I was glad to sit on that. Um, I will be talking with Mr. Kirby on Monday when he's here to discuss, um, the deficit for the road crew salaries um, from the general fund, because, um, I've been told that the funds, or the, basically the road crew can no longer use, like, some of their non-roadwork tasks out of their own salaries, it comes out of the general fund.
That is correct.
It was advised by the auditors to make that change, that there is a deficit on the road crew when they're.
When you say, I wanna interrupt so that people understand, a deficit on that, meaning?
The line item.
The line item itself, not the monies that are in there.
No, there's money in the road.
Right, but I, I didn't want no one to misunderstand here, hey, the Road Department has a deficit.
Well, there is a deficit in that line item, so we need to find other, we need to find it, and we're gonna put it there.
Right.
But I need to talk to Mr. Kirby first, to find out what else. Also, um, like Robin did mention that, uh, you know, I'll be talking with, uh, Mr. Kirby again on the scooter, and getting that appropriated and right with Mr. Kirby, I'm getting those dollars for, um, his payout. So, and then, um, I also wanted to ask, um, I sent out the September management reports this morning, um, did each of you?
I don't, I don't.
It was close to around eleven o'clock, so.
I seen it, but I have another chance to read it.
Yeah, they're just the reports that Mr. Kirby provided. Um, and that's, um, pretty much all I have.
Okay, at this time, I'll open the floor for any questions. Here or none, I will close the floor. Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Yeah, I'll speak up on that. I appreciate having a report, Janet.
Okay.
Um, we actually haven't had a report since, since March.
Okay.
For the entire year, and I appreciate the fact that you're starting to give them, and if you can keep it up to the end of the year, it'd be muchly appreciated, so it makes it, oh, take one?
Take one.
And, uh, I'm sorry. So, that's pretty much it, I just wanted to say thanks, and, uh.
Okay, so, um, anything else from the board? Here or none, I'll move on. Uh, moving on to administration? Go ahead, ma'am.
Well, the hand that I just gave you was, um, what Janet had spoke on briefly, we don't have to really go into it, but that was given to us yesterday at our meeting, so I just wanna make sure that you've had it, because they will be, it was a, um, like an assessment meeting over cybersecurity and our equipment, and cell phones, and laptops, and, and all those things, and they are putting together an assessment of their visit. They, um, talked with Revolution Group, like, for, um, like, where we've got the, um, different things that we're using to protect our, all of our cybersecurity, and, um, the firewalls, and all those things they're asking. Due to that new House Bill ninety-six going into play, so Otama's stepping in to do their role in ensuring that all townships are following that. They asked for a copy of our policy that we passed a, a few weeks back, um, and, and so forth, so that's why they were here, just saying that. Okay, so I'm gonna move right along here. So, um, this is a resolution, uh, to renew the contract with, um, FMLA, which are, is our third party, for FMLA, which is our third-party administrator. Be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board approves Consolidated Admin Services, LLC, as the third-party administrator for Family Medical Leave Act, FMLA, uh, administration per the attached agreement. The estimated monthly fee, uh, per member is three seventy-five, with a minimum charge of one twenty-five a month, for which there was no increase in this agreement, the rates will remain the same as from twenty-five into twenty-twenty-six. The fee included, um, is, um, board on-staffing and assigned case manager, employer portal for access, employee communication, coordination throughout the process, management and documentation, FMLA workflow, and return to work, real-time updates with the employer and various means of customer service. The township administrator or designee shall be the contact person. Be it further resolved that all formal actions of the board concerning and related to the adoption of this resolution were passed in an open meeting of the board, and that all deliberations of this board and any of its committees that resulted in such formal actions were in a meeting open to the public in compliance with all the requirements, including Section one-two-one-point-two-two, the higher revised code. Be it further resolved that the resolution shall be declared an emergency, and shall be in full force effective immediately upon its adoption.
If there's no, uh, said, uh, I accept the resolution as read. If there's no further questions, I'd ask for a second.
For a second?
With a second, or we'll call when you may.
Trustee Freshman?
Yes.
Trustee Leeser?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
And I'm gonna ask the board, it's been two hours, and I'm gonna ask for a quick recess, if we may. Um, so we are in recess. Okay, the time is approximately two oh-six, um, I'm gonna ask. I'm gonna ask to come out of recess if I could have a second.
Oh, second. Nicole, did you turn that back on, ma'am? Or did you shut it off?
She didn't hear what you said.
Nicole? Did you turn that off and back on or? I'm sorry, I didn't know.
So a roll call when ready, ma'am.
Trustee Fleishman?
Yes.
Trustee Leiser?
Yes.
Trustee Blevins?
Yes.
Okay. And ma'am, if you continue, please.
Yes. This is a motion to approve accounts payable. Be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the Board makes a motion to approve accounts payable for October the fifteenth through October the twenty-eighth. The amount of a hundred forty-four thousand, six hundred and three dollars and eighty-one cents from electronic payment ACH vouchers, two six seven nine dash twenty twenty-five through two seven eight nine twenty twenty-five with an exhibit attached.
Okay. If there's no further questions, I'd ask for a second on resolution as accepted.
I will second.
Having the second, I would ask for a roll call when ready, ma'am.
Trustee Fleishman?
Yes.
Trustee Leiser?
Yes.
Trustee Blevins?
Yes.
Thank you. This is just a motion. All right, and then we got to do payroll. Motion to approve payroll. Be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the Board makes a motion to approve the employee payroll for the pay period of October fifth through October the eighteenth in the amount of a hundred fifty-one thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars and ninety-four cents. Direct deposit on October the twenty-fourth, electronic voucher two seven one, two seven one two dash twenty twenty-five through two seven nine zero dash twenty twenty-five with exhibits attached.
I accept a motion as written. Question I have, and I'm sure you're correct on this, why is this a motion and not a resolution? Do you know?
We've always done, I mean, I'm not saying that we're doing it right or wrong. I mean, I think it's because...
You're doing it correct. Payroll and bills cannot, that have to be paid are handled under a motion instead of a resolution.
So...
Per Ohio Revised Code.
So it was just, you know, because usually we use resolution anytime there's money involved. And I was just curious, I mean, I don't know which is correct or wasn't correct, but I just thought I would ask.
Well, I think it's when you have obligations that are outside of your normal realm. Like when we come to about, you know, scooters thing, you know, the speed bumps, the payout for scooter, those are like outside of our normal obligations that we are obligated to pay.
As long as it's, that's what, yeah, you described it the best. As long as it's a township obligation, then we can do it with a motion.
So if there's no further questions, I would ask for a second.
I will second.
Having the second, I will ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Fleishman?
Yes.
Trustee Leiser?
Yes.
Trustee Blevins?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. This resolution is an amendment to a prior resolution. So let me read it through and then if there's any questions, you know. But I hope that it's pretty clear, clear as mud. That's how I get them through. So it's resolution twenty-five, twenty-five dash twenty-five, a resolution, amending resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero six one, approving a new roof for Firehouse one ninety-two. Whereas the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, recognized the need for replacement of the roof at Firehouse one ninety-two. And whereas Allied Roofing had provided the final invoice for the roof placement at Station one ninety-two located at forty-one hundred Sullivan Avenue at a total of ninety-one thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars, which exceeded the amount quoted previously approved by resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh six one of eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Whereas the township's risk management insurance provider, Otama, has submitted a claim payment in the amount of seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars and forty-four cents. Whereas the township is responsible for the twenty-five hundred dollar deductible and the remaining balance is sixteen thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars and fifty cents, rather than twelve thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars and fifty-six cents, as previously stated. And therefore amendment to resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh six one is necessary. The Board hereby approves and authorizes an amendment to resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh six one to reflect the total project cost of ninety-one thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars from the installation of a new roof on Firehouse one ninety-two by Allied Roofing. The deputy fiscal officer is authorized to process the remaining balance of forty-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars, consistent with the cost breakdown, including the initial deposit at forty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars and the insurance reimbursement. Be it further resolved that all formal actions of this Board concerning and relating to the adoption of this resolution were adopted in an open meeting of the Board and that all deliberations of the Board and its committees that resulted in such formal action were conducted in meetings open to the public in compliance with section one two one point two two of the Ohio Revised Code. Be it further resolved that this resolution is hereby declared an emergency and shall take effect immediately upon its adoption.
I accept the resolution as it was read. Question, is this due to some damage storm or, that's what I thought. So, because we, that was fairly weird, like a couple of years to you.
No.
No?
I'm sure we've covered those couple of years.
Okay, I got them confused. Okay. So if there's no further questions from the board, I'd ask for a second.
I will second.
With, here in a second, I'd ask for a roll call.
Trustee Fleishman?
Yes.
Trustee Leiser?
Yes.
Trustee Blevins?
Yes.
Okay. And is there anything else for us, ma'am?
Just real quick. I know we've heard a little bit about these different monies for today, like the, you know, we need to adjust the roof. We've got Scooter's thing, getting the general fund for Jim Stevens' non-road work. Those are all gonna require supplemental preparation.
Sure.
Which again, just expect that in the coming days as we get all those numbers put together. Just be prepared for, that's the reason that supplemental will be coming through.
Okay, okay. Well, I thank you for your work and keeping us all abreast on where we are and how our budget's going. And that's why we do this, what we do here. With that being said, while you are signing, I'm gonna skip to Mr. Blevins. Do you have anything for us?
I do. So I wanted to speak to the board on a subject. So you know I am behind the scholarship fund and we call it the Franklin Township Trustees Scholarship Fund.
Yes.
In the past. And I spoke with my family and realized, so two weeks ago, we all know Scooter was here at this meeting and spoke and everything. And when the meeting got over, I was sitting here and he was sitting back there. And we had a chance to speak. He came up and paid his condolences on my daughter. And come to find out, Scooter and my oldest two daughters went to school together. I believe, if I've got it right, that Scooter's wife graduated with my second oldest daughter, Wendy. Definitely Wendy and Jennifer went to East with Scooter. And we had a meaningful conversation that I'll never forget due to circumstances and everything. And so I'm asking the board, would you consider changing the name only? Everything else will stay the same. I will still keep the committee in place to pick them. Still, there will be no taxpayers' money involved in this any way, shape or form. But I would like to change the name of the scholarship fund for the next two years to Firefighter Scooter Mullins Memorial Scholarship Fund.
So moved. If there's any further questions, if there's not any further questions, I would ask for a second.
Oh, gladly second it. I did wanna have a conversation, just so everybody was aware. I had to bring it to the board, but first of all, I needed to approach the Mullins family to make sure they were good with this. And so I spoke with Gene Mullins, Scooter's dad. And they spoke with the family and they got back to me and said that they would like to accept behalf of the whole entire family. And so their obligation in this will be that they're going to come in when we present the check. And they will be presenting the check in honor and memorial of Scooter Mullins. And so that's what I had when it comes to that. I guess we still have to vote, don't we?
Yes, that's okay.
We got a motion in a second.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. He's gotta finish. If there's any other questions, I'm gonna ask again. So.
I don't have any more questions on that.
If there's no further questions on the matter, I'd ask for a second.
My second.
Okay, and we'll call when ready.
All right, Trustee Fleishman?
Yes.
Trustee Leiser?
Yes.
Trustee Blevins?
Yes.
I just wanted to read, back it up.
And then lastly, this is a trustees. So I just wanna say that I support no one in the election. I wish every candidate good luck. I will work with whomever the people of the township decide to put up here beside me. So I'm here for two more years and I personally have tried to stay clear of it. I did run a campaign two years ago and I definitely understand what it gets like when you're running a campaign. I find it. I just grabbed these as I was on my way out the door. I literally kept everything that came in the mail this year on elections. Now, obviously, this isn't everything to do with the trustees, but it's amazing amount of mail that came to, that had to do with this. So I will work again with whomever the people of the township put beside me. And January, we'll hit the ground running and we'll go from there. And I've enjoyed serving with the board we have now and we'll see what happens on Tuesday. So that's really all I have, gentlemen. Anything I'd like to ask the board, I spoke, John and you and I spoke about this. Dan, this will affect you. I would like to bring in the color guard from Franklin Heights High School ROTC, junior ROTC program, if possible, to present the colors at one of our next couple of meetings before the end of the year. Would the board have objection to that?
I don't.
You're gonna contact them? I will contact them, yeah. I think it ties in with the scholarship, but I think we need, I mean, we have one high school. Sure. And I think we need, like you said, you and I talked before that we need to incorporate them with the community.
They may like to do more than just that. I might even say that getting more involved, maybe even the Boy Scouts or other organizations and us from time to time would like to do that.
It's a good beginning.
Yes. Anything else, sir?
That's all I got.
I only have two things. Sir, are we gonna do a plaque or something as far as for the station and memory of Scooter?
To be determined.
I'm sorry?
I'm sure there'll be something.
Okay. I just didn't know if there was anything that you would like from the board as far as that go. I know the board is the board, the house is the house. But just know that we, I know we respect and honor that. So I just wanted to suggest, I'm sure it's gonna happen, but I would like to see that as a person.
And I will sum it up for you, whatever you need from the board.
And secondly, Ms. Justice, I'd like to thank you professionally for allowing us to continue on. We will get it worked out and that's the way to do it.
Yep, I already have some letters coming your way.
Okay, not a problem. So thank you very much. The meeting went very smoothly and I thank you for your professionalism.
Absolutely.
And lastly, I'm going to close the meeting. Motion to approve ten thirty twenty-five audio video meeting summary of official minutes and records of next meeting, records of meeting, not next. Next regular meeting is November thirteenth, twenty twenty-five at twelve P M. If I can have a second on approving of today's minutes as read?
I will second.
And with a second, I would ask for a roll call.
Trustee Fleishman?
Yes.
Trustee Leiser?
Yes.
Trustee Blevins?
Yes.
The time is now, before I hit this, I wanna thank everybody. This was a long meeting, but we got a lot of work done. So I thank everybody for sticking with it. The time is now approximately two nineteen and we are adjourned.